Thank you for joining us on this very cold evening. And a regular meeting of the Madera City Council, a special meeting of the Madera City Council as the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, a special meeting of the Madera City Council as the successor agency to the former Madera redevelopment agency, and a special meeting of the Madera Housing Authority. If we can have roll call, please.
Mayor Commissioner Andrew Madellin.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Commissioner Santos Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Cici Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Chairperson Jose Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Vice Chairperson Steve Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Derek Robinson, absent. Councilmember Commissioner Donald Hawley.
Present.
Thank you so much, Alicia. Before we get into the invocation, which will be led by Pastor Tim Etcheverria, he brought a few guests with him this evening, and I'm so happy to see them. If you guys could stand, please, so we can all acknowledge the youngsters that Pastor Tim had brought with you. Thank you also very, very much for being here this evening. We welcome you, and hopefully we don't put you to sleep.
Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
I think they wanted to take a picture with you.
We can arrange that. We can absolutely arrange that. Why don't we start with the invocation first and the pledge, and then we could, we can take a photograph with the council? Pastor Tim, if you would please lead us in the invocation.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, our Madera Police Chief, and also our Fire Department. I want to say I'm honored to be here today. We're just going to pray today. Heavily, Father, we come before you, Lord, in the name of Jesus, God. And, Father, we thank you, God, for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy, God. Father, we ask you today, Lord God, and we welcome you in this very place today, Lord God. We pray, God, for your wisdom, Lord God, and I thank you, God, for our mayor, our council members, Lord God, and also our Madera Police Chief, Lord God. We also thank you for our Fire Department, God, and all of our citizens that are here today, and also, God, our city staff. And, Father, I pray for your protection, your wisdom, God, your anointing, and your favor, and I pray everything that goes on tonight, God, everything that's spoken about, God, that you will be glorified and magnified, God. Father, keep your people in the palm of your hand, and, Lord, we thank you, and, God, we give you all the glory, all the honor, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Tim. Join me in the pledge, please. I proudly salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If I can have all you who stood come back up here to the dais and take a picture with the city council. Come on up. Scooch these over a little bit.
Very nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. I saw you guys on the Madera County Board of Supervisors meeting.
Very nice to meet you, man. Nice to meet you, too. How are you? Nice to meet you, buddy. Welcome. Nice to meet you.
How are you doing? You stand from each other. Chuck, yeah.
Take a picture, look out that way. Can we get everybody?
Make sure you get this reader in. We're going to Vegas. Anybody want to go to Vegas?
Fantastic. Thank you all.
I want to go to Vegas. I've never been there before.
Pastor Tim, thank you for bringing this.
That must be cool. He's honest. True.
Now you lost your chair.
Thank you, Pastor Tim.
Moving into the approval of the agenda, this would be for all agendas excluding the Housing Authority. All other agendas excluding the Housing Authority. If there's any changes or questions to those agendas, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Excuse me, wasn't one of the items getting pulled, Ms. City Clerk?
Yes, and that's my fault. We have item B seven. Thank you very much. Item B seven on the consent calendar, staff has asked that we pull that particular item. And, Hilda, regarding item C one, are we going to wait to open that particular hearing, or should that be done now as well?
We have to do that one differently because it is a public hearing, and that way you continue the hearing.
So, there is an amendment to the agenda which would be under consent calendar, item B seven. So, with that motion, Mr. Councilman, if you would include the removal of item B seven?
And, Mr. Mayor, a late distribution item announcement?
Could we do that after the approval of the agenda, or is that part of? Why don't we make it part of?
Okay.
So...
So, move to approve the agenda with the late distribution and removal of item C what? Seven?
B seven. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for said motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposed? Alicia, if you would read that late distribution announcement, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, members of the public are advised that less than seventy-two hours prior to this evening's meeting, item D two was distributed to the council after the agenda packet was finalized. Extra copies of this item are available at the podium for members of the public wishing to receive a copy.
Thank you, Alicia. Moving into public comment, the first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council and commission. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor or the chairman has the option of asking the speaker to hold that comment until the item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council and commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council or commission does not respond to public comment at this time.
Hi, everybody. Ron Montoya, Madera, California. Happy New Year. Let me put this in the context. Our community, we continue to pay twenty to twenty-four thousand dollars in the community facility district tax, just by the numerous calls of the police department, numerous accidents, walls being broke, collided with vehicles, drunk driving that killed a young gal. It's time for action. This non-action is not okay. I'll quote Susan O'Hare, "Paying our fair share." We pay our fair share. With the accidents, the numerous calls of the police department, city streetlights being constantly replaced, we've completed our own traffic study. It's sad that a resident has to come in and request a traffic study, feasibility study, and come up and try to come up with their own solutions. I thought this was what the community facility district tax was kind of for, but as a resident, as being a part of that community, there's nothing community but a community facility district tax. And by continuing to victimize future residents in Madera by slapping on CFD tax on Crown, on Tozer, the one over here on the other side of the tracks, it's unethical, because all it is is just a revenue stream given to the city, and you guys can do whatever you want. It's basically giving you guys a blank check. I spoke with people at the county tax office. Yeah, you guys could be more transparent on what you guys are doing. Mr. Madellin, you're asking me to pay my taxes. You slapped this in two thousand and five, and you don't even pay your own taxes. You owe more than a hundred seven, hundred and seven thousand dollars in tax liens. You want facts? Those are facts. Someone passed away a few weeks ago. Yeah, DUI could have been prevented. It still happened. It's not okay. We pay our fair share. We completed our own traffic study. What more do you want? Mr. Hawley, this is your district. This is your responsibility. Where is the action? You know, my neighbors keep calling me, and I was like, well, you got to go to city council. We need to ensure that the non-action is done, dealt with appropriately. This is not okay. You know? What's the plan? You know, you guys can all, oh, yeah, we CFD taxes X, Y, and Z, but when crap hits the fan, and it already happened, what are you guys going to do? Los Bannons has speed bumps. Sanger has speed bumps. I've sent you guys emails, photos of cities up north, down south, that are way ahead of the curve. Why are we taking, why are we twenty years behind? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My apologies for not presenting this information sooner. In November, when I reached out to you after Mr. Macedo, a healthy forty-eight-year-old man was mauled to death by the dog in the riverbed. This is one extreme example of how animal ordinances and animal control matters. I think we've got a photo here. Another example was in July of two thousand and eighteen, when a woman was attacked by an eighty-pound-plus cane corso fighting dog, which is pictured here. Now, if any of you could imagine that coming at you at full speed in a parking lot, just take a moment and look at that muscle mass. That's five blocks from here. Both bones in her forearm were crushed as the dog attempted to pull her to the ground. This dog was an impulse purchase to a resident who thought he could put it in his backyard and not worry about it. Was also unlicensed, and I believe unaltered. Fortunately, this woman was close to her car, and she survived. Either of these incidents could have been your children or grandchildren playing or riding their bicycles. I have been speaking intermittently at this podium on animal issues for at least the last ten years. The changes now happening at the Madera County Animal Shelter will soon seriously impact the city, if they haven't already. As we discussed last year, I would welcome the opportunity to have a brief workshop or meet with you individually. Some of you have generously already done that. I would also be happy to research and respond in advance to any other questions you'd like to have answered on animal issues. We need to update Madera animal ordinances soon and fully fund our animal control department. The cost of doing nothing is only rising. It's time to move Madera from costly, casual pet ownership to responsible pet ownership, and I believe we may have the opportunity and partnerships now to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you, DJ.
Good evening, Mayor Madellin and the other city council members. My name is Elizabeth Weisner, and I'm with the Community Action Partnership in Madera County, and I'm here to provide an update on the Homeless Point in Time Count. It happens once a year. We're actually funded through the Community Development Block Grant, so I appreciate that funding. We're hard at work at organizing the count. It's going to take place the end of this month. Mandatory training on the twenty-first from two to four, and there are some other trainings available if someone cannot make that training. If you send me an email, I'll let you know when they are. We are short of volunteers this year, so if anyone from the audience would like to help us, I put some flyers over there in, at the wall. It's a very rewarding experience. I do it every year. I, we've got police escorts going out with us this, they went last year, they're going out again this year, and I can guarantee you, I will be within three to five feet of an officer at all times. I am going to take the area by Tozer Bridge. That's be my area because that's where there's a high concentration of homeless people, and just wanted to provide that update. We're going to be sending out six teams through the city of Madera, through the six city districts. We're overlaying those with the five county districts. The sheriff's office is actually helping us with the maps. The homeless outreach workers have been out two days this week. We have found places that we had no idea where, that they were there. We found a mountain up in Oakhurst that there are eight single women living up this hill by themselves, and they've got whole, the encampments look completely different than down here because of the cold. They've got little cook areas, and some of them, they park their cars at the end of the, of the mountain, and they come down every morning and they go to work, and they're living in places that you wouldn't believe. So, it is just, we go out that night, and it's, time flies. Dinner's provided at Cap'n C at five-thirty, so come and have dinner, and then we'll leave out at six-thirty, and it's like, I blink, and it's eleven o'clock. It goes that fast. And it comes with a cool T-shirt, so if you volunteer, it comes with a cool T-shirt. And we go out the next two days, and that's where we actually get to one-on-one with, with the homeless people and ask them, what happened to you and why are you here? And HUD requires that we collect the demographics, and they don't change much from year to year, but it's just that one-on-one contact, a brief moment, and then those that are willing to answer the survey, we have a hygiene kit that we'll give them for taking the time to answer the survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weisner. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment, please come forward. That's perfect timing.
Hello. My name's Eddie Block, Madera, Califor, I don't have to say Madera, but I'm Cleveland. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Homeless Point in Time Count is coming up, and my wife used to work for the homeless shelter here in Madera. Now she works for one in Fresno, and I'm running for county supervisor, so I want to try and find out how to help. So, I asked her what they can do. Well, she says, as employees, they're only allowed to count because they're just, they're just there to get the money. So, if you guys can go down there, be part of it, and sign up, and ask people how to get out of there, you know, we don't want to just sit there and get money and then not help them in the right way. So, please go down, ask them what's wrong, ask them how they need help. That's all I wanted to say for today. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. That's perfect timing.
Hello. My name's Eddie Block, Madera, Califor, I don't have to say Madera, but I'm Cleveland. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Homeless Point in Time Count is coming up, and my wife used to work for the homeless shelter here in Madera. Now she works for one in Fresno, and I'm running for county supervisor, so I want to try and find out how to help. So, I asked her what they can do. Well, she says, as employees, they're only allowed to count because they're just, they're just there to get the money. So, if you guys can go down there, be part of it, and sign up, and ask people how to get out of there, you know, we don't want to just sit there and get money and then not help them in the right way. So, please go down, ask them what's wrong, ask them how they need help. That's all I wanted to say for today. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Yeah, slip right in there.
Good evening. I'm April Molina, Madera County. I've been a part of that point in time count, and it's a fantastic experience for anybody who's never been in the river or even just on the streets. You engage with the people, and even just the people that you're with, and the police officers, they're pretty cool, too. Anyway, I was listening to DJ, and I read in the news today that Gavin Newsom is talking about making California a no-kill state for animals, and I'm going to tell you, we have eight cats. And we have eight cats because we have neighbors that do not span neuter their animals. We have people who dump their animals. We have, every animal we own has been astray. We've had animals with their eyes hanging out of their heads. I've had to have surgery on one cat who had to have his leg cut off. There are a number of issues with the animals, and I have looked into Los Angeles County. They have a mandatory span neuter, as well as places like San Francisco, and I don't understand why we don't have one here. I know Madera County is bigger than just the city, but I wonder if it's something that can be brought to the table at the intergovernmental meeting with County Supervisor and the county supervisors, and everybody talk about the animal issue because it's big. And we have three dogs, eight cats, and I'm tired of taking everybody else's cats. I love them. They're loved, don't worry. They're all fixed. They are all heavy, like, they're fat. They're very fed, very well-fed, and they're good at catching mice, and we live in the county, so. But anyway, just my two cents. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and move into the consent calendar portion. Any council member wishing to pull any particular item? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Under consent calendar, matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Thank you for that reminder. So, is there anyone in the audience wishing to discuss any particular consent item? I'll ask council again. If there's any particular item, if not, I will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Moving into item C one, this is a public hearing in consideration of a resolution of the city council of the city of Madera, California, authorizing the annexation of territory to CFD number two thousand and five dash zero one, and authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting the levy of tax to the qualified electors. Also, item C one-two, a resolution of the city council of the city calling for a special election and submitting to the voters of annexation number six of the city CFD two thousand and five dash zero one, propositions regarding the annual levy of special taxes within annexation number seven, to finance police protection services, fire protection and suppression services, park maintenance and storm drainage system operation and maintenance within the district.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, staff and the property owner need to have further discussions. Staff is therefore requesting that the hearing be continued to February fifth, two thousand and twenty, at six P.M. We ask that this item be continued as well.
Thank you, Mr. Orozco. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask at this time if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item before I bring it back to council. Any discussion by council on this particular item? If not, I will ask for a motion for the continuance, and if we can include all four items under C one in your motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to move this item and continue. I believe, Mr. Orozco, you had mentioned the, the date was?
February fifth.
February fifth, and that's item C one, one through C one, four.
Second. There's a motion and a second to move this particular item to the February fifth meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item C two.
That's related to one, and you can't move on, on C two because C one's been continued. I would recommend you continue C two, one, and C two, two as well.
Thank you very much for that. I will entertain a motion for that.
Should we open that to the public first, or can we go right on there? Hilda?
You, you may request comment from the public.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item C two, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close item C two, bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we continue this item to the February fifth meeting, item C two, one through C two, two.
Second. Once again, moved and seconded to move item C two to the February fifth meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item D one, this is consideration of a resolution approving the Madera Sub-basin coordination agreement and designation of GSA representative.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Not sure exactly what happened here.
No problem.
I'll try to. No, I don't think I'm going to try that. There's a problem with the, with the, it's not opening up. You're going to, you have to go inside. We may need to. There appears to be a problem.
So, it appears that we lost the network drive. We have Mark. He's working on it right now, very diligently.
Is that something we can move forward without the overhead? Do you have hard copy, or would it be best if?
Can we go over to the? Can we just go to D two?
I don't know if we, I'd be happy to move items if you guys are prepared.
Yeah, let's skip items. Can we skip items and then potentially come back to that one?
Yeah.
I have a number of slides, and I'd like to go.
Okay, no, that would, that would be great. So, that's item D one.
Should we table that?
Yeah, why don't we just table item D one until we can get back online? Thanks, guys. Good to see you. Have a good evening.
Bye, young people. Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think, do we need a motion for that? Hilda?
Table the item.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Rodriguez, do you want to move into the successor agency portion, or which item were you considering?
The successor agency.
Okay.
If that's appropriate, and if that's okay by the council.
That's the next one. That's item D two. Okay.
Should we jump back, or would you like to hear the successor agency item first?
Let's jump back into what Keith was prepared to do. So, we will go back to item D one, and once again, this is consideration of a resolution approving the Madera Sub-basin coordination agreement and designation of the GSA. Coordination Agreement and Designation of the GSA Representative. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you again. As you mentioned, this is the staff report addressing the adoption of the Madera Subbasin Agreement Designated Representative alternate to the Coordination Work Group. Counsel already knows these two points, but I'll just repeat them for the sake of repeating them. The groundwater sustainability plan must be adopted by January 31st, 2020. That has already occurred in the month of December, December 18th, in fact. Sigma also requires that if there's more than one GSP within a sub-basin, that we enter into, that all GSAs enter into a coordination agreement. That also has to be, that agreement also has to be submitted by January 31st of 2020. Well, as a coordination agreement, it provides an understanding between the seven GSAs relative to how the GSPs are developed and implemented. It memorializes the methodologies or foundational data affecting the sub-basin. It also ensures the GSPs affecting the sub-basin are coordinated to achieve sustainability, sustainable management of the basin. How does it affect the city? Given where we are with the GSP, I... It's my determination that the impacts are relatively minimal with regard to any GSP. It, the agreement memorializes Sigma, really nothing more than that. However, the inability to secure an agreement risks a basin being out of compliance with Sigma. The status. What is the status of the GSAs or the GSP and the GSAs? Five GSAs have approved the agreement as of yesterday. City Madera is considering the agreement tonight. One GSA, Newstone, has not approved the agreement. The agreement that's attached to the staff report, that is pretty much in substantial conformance with what I think it will be. It'll be very close. Continuing on, the GSAs did meet with the California Department of Water Resources, DWR, on Monday this week. The reason we met with DWR is because we do have one GSA that is not in agreement with the coordination agreement, the language in it. The objections that they have are water balance summary included in the report. They do not agree with that. Within the last two weeks or so, they submitted a water balance that differed than what we had originally in the agreement. And it's different from what we calculate that the water balance should be for Newstone. They also disagree with the liability language within that. If Newstone does not sign the agreement, the Madera Subbasin could be deemed in probation by the state. We would enter a 90-day probation period in which we would be looking to mitigate those concerns from the state. At this point, it looks like we will not have a coordination agreement by January 31st, signed by all seven GSAs. The consequences are uncertain of what DWR would do with that. But the possibilities include they might impose fees within the basin. Those fees could be $300 per well. They might implement demand management measures. Those demand management measures probably would not impact the City of Madera to the degree they would impact other agencies. Those demand management measures might result in telling various farmers that they cannot pump as much water as they're used to. The way the GSP is prepared at this point is we have a 20-year period to get into compliance. The state would implement that however they chose to do that. Now, the state could go ahead and hold this against the sub-basin in general, meaning all seven GSAs within our sub-basin. Or they could choose to focus on the one GSA that refused to sign the agreement. We do not know what that answer is as of yet. We'll find out if we do not get a agreement submitted by the 31st. But that might take a little bit of time for them to come to that determination.
Well, it's all new, Keith, so I'm sure we can't be the only GSA that is not unanimous.
Within our sub-basin, well, within our sub-basin, we do have seven GSAs.
Right.
Six are on board with the agreement.
But I'm talking about statewide. We can't be the only one that is not...
No, I do not believe so. The, every, every sub-basin is going to be different. Every sub-basin is going to have a different agreement. There's going to be language within those. I do not believe we are the only ones.
Councilman Montes has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Keith, do we know why that GSA is unwilling to sign the agreement? Is it not favorable to them? Can you not comment on it? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I can comment on, I can comment on everything that I know. Probably will not go ahead and, probably should not discuss some of what the, our coordination committee has been discussing relative to the possibilities of how we will deal with that. I'll, I'll be speaking with the city manager, and we'll be potentially taking that back to the city council to go ahead and discuss in greater detail later. I do expect that we will be coming to council to discuss the options of how we would handle this. Now, as far as the water balance summary, the agreement that we do have right now shows that they are about 5,100 acre-foot out of balance, meaning they have to make up for 5,100 acre-feet per year. In the last two weeks, they have submitted something that says that they're closer to 4,000 acre-feet to the good. That... The GSAs, the technical committee members, we do not agree with that at this point. Our consultant that prepared the GSP has indicated that if anything, they're not 4,000 acre-foot to the good. They're probably 6,100 foot to the negative. Their original water balance showed 5,100. So we actually think it's probably 1,000 acre-foot worse than what they had originally. With regard to the liability language, their concerns with that is that we can, the other GSAs can sue them as a matter of a contractual breach rather than just being in, out of compliance with Sigma. That's, they want to go ahead and remove that potential, that language from the agreement. So those are the two primary reasons. They, in our, in the staff report presented to council, there was also a paragraph that discussed the cost sharing. They did not agree with the cost sharing. They did not bring that up at the meeting with the state. They did, however, indicate that they are steadfast in their objections, and they're not likely to back away from them easily. So we hope to find a method to go ahead and allow them to sign. But at this point, we don't, do not seem to have a clear path forward.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Millen. Keith, so with the other six GSAs, I'm assuming that they were all in agreement with their, their overdraft regarding the water balance. So this particular one claims it's 4,000. Our consultant claims that it's 6,000, but the technical memorandum says that it's 5,100?
The, all GSAs, excuse me, the GSAs that prepared their own GSPs, they came up with their own calculations. They varied between, in their methods and how they got there. For instance, our GSP has detailed models that were used to determine the balance. Others use more, more of an understanding of what they were pumping, what the, what the groundwater level was. I'd say it varies between exact science and observations. And I'm not going to go ahead and say I have that particular explanation down. I'm just, I'm just saying it varies fairly radically in terms of the methodology used. Now, they, because of this, our model will not necessarily match up with what other GSPs have shown. But we seem to be within a good margin of error with regard to our comparisons from, from our model to theirs. But this, this change from going from minus 5,100 to about 4,000 plus, we, we can't support that with our model. Now, the, there will be differences in, in the various GSAs. A few, a couple of them have had concerns with regard to that. So we have added footnotes to the agreement that indicates that, that there is the potential for those to change, and they will be adjusted. We, we look at the, we'll look at what we're doing on an annual basis. It'll give us an idea of where we're going, what we might, what we might try to do to go ahead and fix things if we think things aren't quite perfect. At the five-year stage, we do a complete review of everything. And it's at that stage where we may make wholesale changes to the plan if they're necessary. But that's only after five years when we know, when we have a much better idea of what's going on, when we've been tracking, tracking water levels in wells, pumping. We may very well get satellite coverage of farmland in the country to go ahead and understand how much water is being taken out of the ground. The, the process is only going to get better over time.
And we're not accepting their claim because we know based on maybe our consultant that it's much higher, higher than what was proposed, or it's 5,100?
It's significantly different.
Yes.
We, we're, we think that adding a footnote to their table that indicates that there will be additional review should be sufficient, but they, they are not accepting a footnote either.
And just for clarification of the record, Mr. Helmut, when you use the term "we", that reflects not just the City of Madera, but the other five entities that have already approved it?
It reflects the other five entities, yes.
And you mentioned litigation. So if we don't get a signed GSP by all agency, by all the GSAs...
Coordination agreement, yes.
Yes. At that point, the WR has not determined how they'll impose those fees. But if fees were passed on to the other GSAs, can these GSAs then take some type of litigation on this one particular entity?
That's probably a question better asked of the city attorney.
As Mr. Helmut noted earlier, DWR is being very hesitant in giving more information regarding potential penalties. So they are somewhat vague. If we do not have a signed agreement with them, because they say, they refuse, and the coordination agreement is submitted to the state, the six could not sue on the basis of that agreement because they didn't sign it. However, there could be other legal theories that we would be exploring along with the other five entities.
And we will be exploring those, those theories in fairly short order.
Thank you, Keith.
Mayor Protem Garcia has a question.
So you are asking of us to approve what we can and move forward?
Yes.
Because between now and the 31st is not a whole lot of time. And they might or may not sign off.
They might.
So we need to do our due diligence in approving on our side what we found from the, from our, our sources.
Exactly. Right now, the, the agreement just, it provides the water balance as we know it. And it provides certain language that they're objecting to. So what, what staff is asking is that council approve of that agreement in its current form, recognizing that there may be minor changes coming through. Even, even after I prepared this particular staff report, there were, there were footnotes that were being added to go ahead and make certain that all, all GSAs were happy with the language and how it was presented. So we, we have, we went as a group as far as we could to go ahead and make certain all GSAs could sign. But at this point, we, as a group of GSAs, we do not feel we can go ahead and remove the liability language or change the, the water balance.
Any other questions? Thanks, Keith, if you can continue.
Cost-sharing language. The, the agreement does include provisions with regard to costs. One of those is the point of contact. We are hiring a, excuse me, a consultant that will be the point of contact between the GSAs and the state. Based upon their budget, the, of $61,264, the city's budget would be $8,752 per year. This is an estimate. It is also based upon seven GSAs. If, if the Newstone GSA were to pull out for any reason, this number would be divided by six. The data management system, that's $9,500 with a $900 annual maintenance fee. That right now is divided by two sub-basins. There are two sub-basins within Madera County. And then further divided by seven ways within our particular GSA. Again, this would change a little bit because it might not be divided by seven ways. There are provisions for review within the agreement. And those are, we have until January 31st of 2022 to review that. And if there's a more equitable way of dividing the costs, we would bring that up before that time. Other cost sharing, I will be bringing a, a cost-sharing agreement probably at the next meeting. And that include, that's the consultant to prepare the annual reports. And that is divided by four ways because that particular agreement is only for our GSP. As I have it at this point in time, the total cost of the city would be a little over $40,000 for the first year with $900 in annual maintenance fees. And I do recognize that I, that the, I should recognize that the, there are other annual fees in there in addition to the maintenance fee. For instance, the annual report, about $22,000 a year. So I apologize for many misunderstandings here. Funding, staff continues, still continues to propose the use of the Water Utility Fund because we feel that it is the most reasonable and practical funding source. However, staff will be working with the city attorney to establish that that is the most appropriate funding source from a legal standpoint. The recommended action for this is to approve the coordination agreement in the form substantially similar to what that found in the staff report, and then grant the mayor discretion in signing the final agreement. As we see it right now, there will be six GSAs that will sign it. We'll be submitting six different signature pages to the state before January 31st. Hopefully, we'll have seven.
Councilman Holly.
Yeah. Keith, even though the other GS person decide, Newport, decides to pull out, doesn't he still have to pay his fees fair share?
Per the, per the agreement, he is supposed to be paying his fair share. But if there is no agreement, we, there's no, really no way to ask or expect of him to pay for those amounts.
But if I remember in the first meeting that we started this out, all those that came on board was part of it. There was no where they can pull out and not have to be responsible for paying their share because they don't agree on something.
If, if they, if they sign on to the coordination agreement, that is true. So without them being a part of the coordination agreement, I, I think we're, we're all, with everything we do here right now with the, the GSP, we are in uncharted waters. If, if they do not sign that, potentially, there are costs coming to all GSAs. With any luck, the, the state would determine that it is that particular GSA that, that needs to be...
You can be fined differently?
Potentially, yes. We, we didn't, we, all we know is potential based upon our meeting with the state. They have been, the state has tried to be as forthright with GSAs as possible to, to let them know they need to find their own way, or the state will step in. If the state steps in, they will incur costs, and they will pass those costs along. If the state steps in, they will incur costs and they will pass those costs along.
Thank you.
With any luck, they'll let us move along separately as six GSAs rather than seven.
Any further questions? If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for any further questions or direction.
Mr. Mayor, if there's nothing, I would accept staff's recommendation to approve the agreement as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item D1 as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thanks for that report, Keith, and we look forward to hearing from you on...
Maybe sooner than you think. I'm not done. The next portion of this is the designation of a representative and alternate to the coordination work group. So for the purpose of this is to establish the representative assistant establishing and then participates in the GSA work group. The representative will also represent the GSA and act within its best interest or specific direction from the GSA when provided, and city council is the GSA. The representative would ideally be or become knowledgeable in the GSP and related matters. The work group itself provides a form in which GSAs can coordinate the GSPs for the basin and satisfy the coordination obligation of Sigma. You have options with regard to the representative. Staff volunteers, the city engineer, myself, given the experience that I've gathered thus far in about the last eight months or so. Alternates, I have a preference here based upon talking to the other GSAs within our GSP earlier today in that we would designate, the representative would be able to go ahead and have a designee that could change from meeting to meeting if necessary. You could also choose to select a staff member from engineering or public works as an alternate or a council member. In all cases, these meetings are open to the general public and anybody can attend. So it can be that a council member, if they wish to show up and participate, they can. They just don't necessarily have any voting rights with regard to that. The time demands, not fully known at this time, but may include technical reviews of data, selection of consultants, participation preparing a well mitigation program, which we discussed a little bit earlier today, presentations to council, et cetera. If there are any more questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So obviously, Keith, you're the primary. Do you have alternate right now?
I technically am the alternate to the committee that will be dissolving shortly. I'm the technical representative.
So was it Dave Merchant was the primary?
Yes, he was.
So since he's been gone, you've taken over and we haven't had an alternate?
And the elected official was Councilman Robinson.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Member. And I was going to ask the same question. So at this point, because you're all the alternate and we no longer have the representative, then I would move that we make you the representative, and do you have a designee?
Yeah, the way this, I think, will work is if I'm not available, I can designate anybody I so desire. That could be a public works representative, a council member if they so desire, if you so desire, or really anybody. So it wouldn't be a specific one. We can go ahead and make a specific designee. That requires that that designee be available.
So, I mean, I would feel comfortable with Keith being our representative and certainly a designee of someone that has experience and is willing to take on that technical knowledge of the GSP. So with that, I would move to have Keith as our representative, and then I don't know if the council wants to decide on maybe having an alternate from the council.
I would agree with you, Mr. Councilman, and also give discretion to Mr. Helmoth on who that designee would be. Again, somebody with not only the expertise but the time to do so, and I think Mr. Helmoth and his staff would know better than we would. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, and as he noted, these meetings are public, so anyone from the public can attend and also queue into what's partaking in that meeting. So with that, I would make a motion.
A second.
Wanted in a motion to have Keith as our representative.
I'm going to defer to Hilda because it seemed like on item D1, we jumped the gun a little bit and only did half of what we were supposed to do. So do we need to amend that motion, Hilda, or can we just take this as a second motion as the second part of this item? What are you comfortable with?
Language concerning the representative, did it?
Um...
Or did it? Let me pull that.
I didn't see that.
If it doesn't, then it's appropriate to do it by separate motion. And if not, if it were, yeah, I don't see any language in there that, yes, there is actually.
Yes, designation.
On page two of the resolution, it says the council designates so-and-so as a representative and so-and-so as the alternate. So what you could do is your motion would be to include the representative and alternate and add those two persons to the resolution that has been approved.
Would the second one be designee by representative?
Yes.
So then the motion would be, again, to approve item D1, right, and selecting our representative to be Keith Helmoth with the alternate designee of the representative? I mean, is that correct? Okay, so is that my motion there?
It worked for me, but it worked for Hilda.
Great.
So that was my motion, I'm sorry.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Montez. Before I go further, any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second to approve that representative and designee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, and I apologize for the confusion on the resolution. I should have known that.
Thank you, Keith. Moving on to item D2, this is actions relating to the successor agency annual budget reporting to the Department of Finance. Item D2-1 is consideration of a resolution adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule, or the ROPS, representing period July 1 of 2020 to June 30 of 2021 for the city of Madera as the successor agency of the former Madera redevelopment agency. And item D2-2 is also consideration of a reso approving the admin budget for the city of Madera as the successor agency of the former Madera redevelopment agency of the city of Madera for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and old Rodriguez representing the successor agency this evening. The item before you this evening is the annual report that the successor agency is required to submit to the Department of Finance. Council may recall that when the redevelopment agencies were dissolved February 1 of 2012, the Department of Finance took over, and it was mandated that every local jurisdiction that at the time had a redevelopment agency established a long-term plan, and then you have to provide updates annually. Those updates are due February of every year. So at this time, the, can the item before you this evening simply stipulates how much funds and what the funds are going to be allocated for as attachment A and attachment B as part of the staff report? So this upcoming year, it's designated to be roughly 7.9 million. The vast majority of that 7.9 million is for the repayment of existing bonds that were done over the previous 20, 25 years. Of that, there's roughly $354,000 established for staff time. Now, that staff time, though, is not 100%. It's not 100% simply staff. Rather, what it does is the Department of Finance states, and this is across the board, this doesn't simply apply to the city of Madera, that to administer the successor agency, the maximum you can do or allocate is $250,000 per year. So staff is recommending that we designate the maximum allowed under state law, which is 250,000. Staff is also recommending that we allocate $104,000 to administer the bond repayment of that for a total of 354,000. That's not to say that that's exactly what we're going to use. However, what we would do at this time, if city council takes action this evening to approve this, next week, which would be on January the 23rd at 8:30 in the morning in this room, the oversight committee or board is going to review it. If they approve it, we would submit it to the Department of Finance, and then the Department of Finance is going to compare it with their records to ensure that the city is complying with the state law and what the city had initially set out to do back in 2012. So again, so this is an annual report. We're not asking for anything different that wasn't already identified back in 2012. We're simply attempting to provide the financing structure back to the state, and we're simply doing an annual report.
Mr. Rodriguez, I'm sorry, those two numbers, again, you said $250,000 and the other one was?
$104,000 approximately, and that's for the repayment of the bond. So that's to administer the bond repayment, which I believe is attachment B, B as in boy in your staff report? Let me take a look at the...
You said, maybe I just heard wrong.
Actually, it's attachment A of, it's exhibit A of attachment two.
Oh, I'm sorry, MNO 114, I thought it was 154. I heard one, okay. In my head, I was off $50,000, but it is 114 on your total MNO. My apologies.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's 114, okay, I apologize. I think I said 104. I obviously read that incorrectly. Let me flip pages here. It's $104,000. It would be attachment A of, it's exhibit A of attachment two. For the salaries and benefits for the bond repayment, it's $40,000. For MNO, it's $64,000 for a total of $104,000. So it's 114 if you include it, can the RP, TTF, but if you're simply going down on the bond repayment, it's 104,000. So total, it's $354,000 regardless of how you add it. So it's 250, then 104,000 for a total of 354,000. And that concludes my presentation this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
I so move to approve D2 as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Been a little while since we did anything with the RDA. Been a long while.
It has, yeah. It's been a long while.
Yeah, we'll get that back on track. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item D3, this is consideration of adopting a resolution approving an at-will employment agreement with John Scarborough to serve as the Director of Parks and Community Services of the city of Madera.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I apologize, I have the item as G3 rather than D3 up here. So as the mayor indicated, the item this evening is for an employment agreement with John Scarborough to serve as the city's Parks and Community Services Director. Mr. Scarborough has been filling in as an interim director since March 2019. Prior to that, John was also serving as the interim Public Works Director for approximately two years. So for a number of months there, for about seven months, John was actually serving in two different capacities, both as a public works director and as the parks director, which is a challenging task, simply doing one of those. So I would like to publicly thank John for taking that on in, quite frankly, in a time of need for the city. So John has been with the city for approximately 10 years, and John has historically been housed in the Parks Department. John, prior to serving as the interim Public Works Director, John was serving as the Parks Manager, and he was overseeing construction management, CIP projects for the Parks Department. So a lot of the park improvements you've seen over the past 10 years, John was in charge of that. So this is an at-will agreement. Staff is proposing a three-year term, which is similar to our department heads. The council may recall, back in April of 2019, if memory serves me correctly, council approved seven department head contracts. Again, I'm kind of going off the top of my head, but it could have been six, the raw three-year agreements. So I'm recommending this evening that John's salary be set at step C, which would be approximately $119,000 per year. Besides that, this contract mirrors every other department contract that the city council approved for all the other department heads in terms of severance and termination. So again, severance would be one and a half month salary, and that would be without cause. The employment may be terminated by the city manager, so myself. Paid vacation would be accrued to a maximum of 360 hours, not 360,000. That would be a lot of hours. That would be a couple of lifetimes, I believe. And the accrual would be based on the number of years he's been with the city, and that mirrors all other employees at the city. His sick leave would accrue at 3.69 hours per pay period, and then after five years, which John's been with the city for approximately 10, it changes a little bit, and then family sick leave, up to 72 hours, may be used to care for a family member each year. Paid leave, sort of administrative leave, it's 40 hours per year. Administrative leave does not carry over from year to year, so either you use it or you lose it come July 1st, and it's not available for cash out either. Council may recall that those were some of the changes that we made when we negotiated the updated department head contracts. Paid holidays would be similar to all other bargaining units and all other employees at the city. The floating holidays would be based on the number of years of service. So for example, if John's been with the city for 10 years, he would be eligible to receive up to 40 hours per year. Those hours, again, are not available for carryover, so if he does not use them in a fiscal year, he would lose them, and at the same time, they're not eligible for cashing out. So again, so he can't cash those out to say, you know what, just pay me for them and I'm okay. You can no longer do that. The retirement, he would be under the same system. It's a purse. John would be paying 2.37% of his base pay towards the employer contribution, and in terms of the deferred compensation program commonly referred to as a 457, which is the public, it's the government version of a 401K. The city does not contribute to that for department heads. However, if John, John may participate if he provides his own contributions. And employees, in terms of health care, it would be the same conditions as the mid-management group, which was negotiated about two months ago. In terms of other benefits, John would be eligible to receive up to $75 for the use of his personal cell phone for city business. He would receive up to three days of bereavement leave in the event of a death. The city does provide $50,000 for life insurance, and then he would also be eligible to purchase more. The city does provide long-term disability, and then also John would be eligible to purchase health insurance after retirement, but again, no contribution by the city whatsoever. So if John were to leave and if he were to retire in terms of health care, that would be up to him to select. So the funding for this position was identified when council considered the budget in July 2nd, July 3 of 2019. That position was budgeted. So in terms of can the city afford this, it was budgeted. And so again, so staff's recommendation this evening is that the council approve John's employment contract. Again, it's a three-year contract and to allow the city manager to execute the agreement. With that being said, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Any questions from council from Mr. Rodriguez? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item or this contract, please come forward. Seeing none, before I bring it back to council, I have an announcement. If approved, the proposed Director of Parks and Community Services at-will employment agreement would employ John Scarborough as the Director of Parks and Community Services effective January 18, 2020. The salary for the position and other terms of the conditions of employment are stated in the employment agreement. In summary, the following are contained in the agreement. And I will, for legal purposes, have to recap what Mr. Rodriguez had just presented. Annual base salary will be step C of range 509, which is $119,223.94 per year. Employee will be entitled to one and a half month salary and health benefits severance if separated without cause. Vacation accrual will be 3.69 to 6.15 hours per day period based on years of service. Maximum vacation accrual is 360 hours. Sick leave accrual will be 3.6923 hours per pay period. Sick leave accrual will be three point six nine two three hours per pay period. Admin leave will be forty hours per fiscal year, not eligible for carryover or cash out. Floating holiday will be zero to forty hours per fiscal year depending on years of service, not eligible for carryover or cash out. Employee will pay the full eight percent employee contribution to CalPERS, and will also pay two point three seven five percent of base salary towards the employer contribution to CalPERS. Employee will receive the same plan offerings as the same employer, contributions towards health insurance as received by the mid-management employee group. The technology allowance is seventy-five dollars per month for the use of personal cellphone for the, for city business. City paid life insurance of fifty thousand dollars for employee, five thousand dollars for dependents. City paid long-term disability policy, up to three days per year of bereavement leave for listed family members. With that, I'll bring it back to council and entertain a motion.
I motion to approve D three as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to approve item D three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Scarborough.
I just want to briefly say thank you, Mayor and council. It's really an honor for me to be able to continue to serve this community. Thank you.
Great, John. Thank you very much. Item D four is consideration of adopting a resolution approving an at-will employment agreement with Rogelio Sanchez to serve as Director of Financial Services of the City of Madera.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This evening, I would like to com- can discuss an employment contract with, come with Roger Sanchez to be the city's next Director of Financial Services. Um, this contract mirrors the contract that we just discussed. There, the only anomaly that I can think of would be the salary. Um, however, um, it's a three-year agreement. Um, it has the same benefits in terms of, um, healthcare benefits, um, in terms of long, um, in terms of, um, so vacation hours, bereavement leave, in terms of contributions to, to healthcare. Um, so this evening, um, I'm recommending that the council, um, approve a three-year contract. It's also a, a, um, it's an at-will position. Um, this position has been vacant since June of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, since that time, we have filled that position with two different inrooms. We currently have, um, we currently have Kamviki Crowe, who's, uh, who's in the audience, who's in the front row. She's been serving in that position, um, as a Contract Financial Services Director. We did conduct, um, what I would consider nationwide, um, um, come recruitment. We, we, we plastered the recruitment process everywhere we possibly could. We did receive ten applicants. We had a technical panel, uh, where they interviewed the top six candidates. That technical panel had ranked Roger as the number one candidate. After that, we had an internal process where, um, where we interviewed him, and quite frankly, during the interview process, it was very clear that Roger was a number one candidate. Um, the, the actual process of negotiations was relatively smooth. It was very fast. Roger wants to be here, um, and so that always makes it extremely easy to negotiate a contract when someone wants to be here. Um, I'm recommending this evening that Roger's starting salary be at Step E of, of the range, uh, five twenty-five. Uh, the maximum salary for this position is roughly a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So again, it would be Step E. Um, um, after that, if, if Roger, uh, come were to perform how we anticipate he is going to perform, um, um, at that point, he would be eligible to receive a step increase to the maximum of Step F. In terms of severance and termination, it's the identical language as John's. Uh, paid leave, identical language, can not only to John's, to really to all department heads. So every department head contract is identical for the most part. The only nuances is the salary range, but besides that, they're all the same. Uh, paid leave continued, um, same accrual, same family sick leave, same number of hours of administrative leave, the same exact paid holidays, floating holidays are identical, the retirement's identical, um, h- health insurance is identical, and the other benefits, um, similar to, to most department heads, he would be receiving seventy-five dollars a month for technology allowance, and that would be to, uh, where he would use his, oh, his personal phone to conduct city business. Uh, bereavement leave is the same, and besides that, everything else is exactly like it. This position was budgeted in the, in existing budget. Um, so there's no need to augment the existing city budget because that position was, was budgeted at one hundred percent, and, and it can falls come within the range that was budgeted for. Um, so with that, I'm recommending that the council adopt the resolution approving his at-will employment agreement with Mr. Sanchez, which again is a three-year agreement. Um, if council approves it this evening, uh, Roger would begin on January the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Any questions from council for Mr. Rodriguez? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item or this contract, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Before I do, I'll read this statement. Once again, if approved, the proposed Director of Financial Services at-will employment agreement would employ Rogelio Sanchez as the Director of Financial Services effective January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. The salary for the position and other terms and conditions of employment are as stated in the employment agreement. In summary, the following are contained in the agreement. The annual base salary will be Step E of range five twenty-five, which is a hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and five cents per year. Employee will be entitled to one and a half month salary and health benefit severance if separated without cause. Vacation accrual will be three point six nine to six point one five hours per day period, per pay period based on years of service. Maximum vacation accrual is three hundred and sixty hours. Sick leave accrual will be three point six nine two three hours per pay period. Administratives, administrative leave will be forty hours per fiscal year, not eligible for carryover or cash out. Floating holiday will be zero to forty hours per fiscal year depending on years of service, not eligible for carryover or cash out. Employee will pay the full six point two five percent employee contribution to CalPERS, and will also pay two point three seven five percent of base salary towards the employer contribution to CalPERS. Employee will receive the same plan offerings and the same employer contributions towards health insurance as received by the mid-management employee group. Technology allowance is seventy-five dollars per month for the use of personal cellphone for the city's business. City paid life insurance of fifty thousand dollars for employee and five thousand dollars for dependents. City paid long-term disability policy, up to three days per year bereavement leave for listed family members. And with that, I will call for action from council.
I so move to approve D four as presented.
Second.
So again, it's been properly approved and seconded, motioned and seconded to approve item D four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. That's good. We've got a Financial Services Director.
So first thing, Roger's not here this evening. He's currently out of town, which is where he's living, but we'll, Wendy's probably emailing him right now.
My assumption is he's watching, so I'd like to congratulate him and, and, and welcome him, and, uh, look forward to you introducing him, him to us here very soon.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D five. This is introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Madera, California, amending title. Municipal utilities regarding discontinuance of service, delinquent accounts, and noticing prior to termination of service and adoption of resolution establishing the City of Madera utility service policy for delinquent residential and multifamily customers.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Vicky Crowe, soon to be unemployed interim finance director. Um, I have with me Ann Bowie, who is the Utility Billing Supervisor and subject matter expert. I'm here to present item D five regarding the Senate Bill nine nine eight implementation. And, let's see. Senate Bill nine nine eight, nine nine eight was enacted and is also called the Water Shut Off Protection Act. It was signed into legislation September twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, which adds Chapter Six, Discontinuation of Residential Water Service to the Health and Safety Code. It is effective February first, two thousand and twenty. The law, which supplies, uh, which applies to residential customers only, requires that the city, um, that all public water systems have a written policy on, on discontinuance of residential water services, that they provide that policy in mul- multiple languages. It also prohibits urban and community wa- water systems from discontinuing residential service for non-payment until delinquent for at least fifty, sixty days. In accordance with the city, this, uh, in accordance with the new law, the city has, um, the city will extend the number of days before it shuts off service to at least sixty days. It has already updated its current policy and municipal ordinance to be compliant with SB nine nine eight, and we will be, um, posting that policy on the city's website. Uh, we have also updated notices that are sent to residential customers to be compliant with SB nine nine eight, and I just wanted to let you know that, um, non-compliance or failure to implement by February first, two thousand and twenty could result in the State Water Board assessing civil penalties not to exceed, um, a thousand dollars per day. Sorry, I didn't make it to that slide. That's the last slide. So, um, we are recommending that the City Council adopt the amended municipal code and the resolution amending city policy, and I will be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Any questions regarding this particular item? Councilman Rodriguez?
Prior to the, the Senate Bill nine nine eight, um, what was the city's, uh, policy regarding, um, non-payment and discontinuance of service? Were we at a sixty-day also prior to that, or are we shorter term?
It was shorter term. I, I, I think we started noticing them through, well, the noticing doesn't significantly change because we already notice over and above what the law requires, but we were probably shutting or noticing termination by thirty days or forty days after, but I'll let Ann clarify that.
We would start, good evening. We would start on the shut-off process about forty-five days, um, once an account becomes delinquent. We also reach out in every effort to contact the customers to try to get them to come in and communicate with us, to do alternatives, as like a payment arrangement or something, because the last thing we want to do is turn their water off. Um, so we do every intent. We notice them. Their first notification is on their monthly statement, telling them to reach out to us. The second one is a phone call. If we have a phone number on file, we reach out to them that way. Um, most of the time, that does generate some response from the community, reaching out to us, you know, asking for an extension on their account, which most of the time we do work with them, with, as long as it's within reason. And then our third is a actual mail notice that is mailed to the residents as well as to, um, the owner of the property. So it would be also or worded as the tenant and the owner. So we do everything in our power to reach out to the community to make sure that their water does not get interrupted, and hopefully they'll respond back to us, which most of the time they do.
And with this new Senate bill, what we're currently doing now is, is part of their mandatory compliance as well that we follow through in that manner?
Yes, the only thing is the days are going to be extended out.
Okay, well, I mean, forty-five, sixty days, we're just extending it.
So we go to sixty-one days is when we would start the process.
Thank you.
Further questions? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak or have any questions, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Hilda, on my notes, I didn't put down, um, um, title on this particular one. In the, if there's a motion, should that just include the way, way further reading, or do we need to call for title on this item?
Y- you can just include a wa- wa- further reading and just read the title. Go ahead and read the title of it.
Under subject, are you talking about in, in, in the motion to just continue with the way further reading and continue with that recommendation?
Let me look at the recommendation. It's in front. Um...
I believe we can just do that.
I think if you read that, um, I think if you read that, that, that should be fine. Uh, but you should say intro- uh, introduct- move to introduce the ordinance, uh, and where is the title?
It's in our agenda.
It's in titles, Title Eight?
Yeah, it's...
Chapter Seven.
In the staff report.
I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, print out my, the staff report this time.
It's under recommendation.
I would, I would recommend that you read the, the rec- whatever the recommendation is, we usually, is that where we?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve item D five, introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Madera, California, amending Title Eight, Finance, Revenue and Taxation, Chapter Seven, Municipal Utilities Regarding Discontinuance of Service, Delinquent Accounts, and Noticing Prior to Termination of Service and Adoption, a Resolution Establishing the City of Madera Utility Service Policy for Delinquent Residential and Multifamily Customers.
Second.
And I waive further reading.
It's been moved and seconded to waive further reading and introduce the ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you both very much. And Vicky, I know today's not your last day, but thank you so much for your service. All departments are very, very important to the city, one no greater than the other. But in our Finance Department, we needed to stop a little bit of bleeding, and we needed some support, and Mr. Rodriguez needed some support, and you offered that, so I want to say thank you very, very much. Absolutely.
Now they told you wasn't going nowhere, right?
There are no admin reports, so I'll move on to item F. This is council member reports, announcements, and future agenda items. This portion, portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees, and other public agencies, and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items, and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. With that, I'll start to my right with Councilwoman Gallegos.
Um, just really fast, I got to, had the pleasure with City Manager Rodriguez and Mayor Madilla, and quite a few staff members that are here. Uh, we broke ground on the five Habitat Homes that we are, um, collaborating with to build for residents in the City of Madera, so that was a great day today.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for being there. Mayor Protem Garcia, welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I had, I had the pleasure with, working with staff and other members of the community regarding, um, putting a plan together, um, regarding the, the census for two thousand and twenty. It's right around the corner. Uh, we're making a lot of effort to, uh, publicize it, um, and get it out there to the public. We will be having a press conference. Uh, we are, are getting banners, um, as we speak, getting banners put together, um, to make sure that the public is aware of, of the census, which is very, very important. Um, every ten years, this is, uh, something that we, 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 it's mandated that we do, and we count every person. So babies are counted, family members, everyone should be counted because it's very important. You might have noticed my absence a little bit during the holidays. Um, my wife is from Nicaragua, Central America, um, and, uh, we have gone back there for vacations over the years, and our children love it. Um, it's very tropical, very warm. Uh, there's a lot of beaches left and right. Well, on one side, you have the Atlantic Ocean, and then right in the middle of the country is a huge lake with two volcanoes on it, and, uh, the Pacific Ocean. So we bounced back and forth. My son, uh, actually, uh, took his girlfriend in two thousand and seventeen and introduced her to the country. When he asked her to marry him, she says, okay, but we gotta do it here in Nicaragua. So we dragged a bunch of folks, uh, thirty-five, uh, down there, uh, even some Clovisites, uh, joined us. So, because she's from Clovis, her parents are Clovis, so we went down there, we had a wonderful time. It was very special. Uh, my wife was ecstatic that they chose to have their wedding there, so. Anyway, that's what I did, December and January, but now I'm back. Thank you.
Good for you. Welcome back, and congratulations. Councilman Hawley?
Uh, yeah, I have one small announcement. On January the nineteenth, uh, Sunday coming up, uh, the Martin Luther King Local Host Committee is putting on a celebration at Martin Luther King School, and the festivities will start at two o'clock. Uh, dear to my heart, this is one of the programs that I've been involved with for the last twenty-some odd years. What it does is target little kids to give speeches about Dr. King, and most of the kids, or all of the kids really, are out of grammar school, and a few high schools and pioneer schools. So to hear them, they are rewarded, which is makes it good for kids to, to learn how to earn a paycheck, uh, to give speeches. So if you haven't ever attended one of these, you ought to come out Tuesday, uh, probably only lasts about two hours, you'd be home to watch. Probably only lasts about two hours. You'd be home to watch. You ain't got to worry about football because it's probably off. But anyway, just to come out and enjoy the festivities, see the different folks, and it's a city event. So, we welcome you.
Since the Raiders aren't on, nobody should be watching football anyway, right?
Yeah.
I understand completely. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Madillan. I was going to save this comment for the Public Housing Authority, but since we can talk about other agencies, I did have an opportunity to attend the Commissioners Conference that was held by FADA, the Public Housing Authorities Directors Association. I had the privilege to attend the conference for the Commissioners. And I got to tell you that public finance is a totally different animal, a lot to learn. There was a lot of good sessions and breakout sessions that I attended. I wanted to thank Ms. Bonpressy for encouraging me to go out there. I thought it was very instrumental for me as your incoming chair. I would also advise that this Commissioner or Council in the future attend one of these conferences as they're very informative, especially when we're dealing with public funding. I wanted to share that there are some really good workshops that I brought back, and I'd like to hopefully share them with you and hopefully use them in a very productive manner, especially when it comes to board conflicts. I think we can learn a lot about each other. But this will be an exercise that I hope that I can bring back to our Housing Authority Commissioners, and hopefully, we can learn from that together. But other than that, I had a great turnout, good information, and I hope to utilize that as your incoming chair. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for attending. Very valuable information, it sounds like. Councilman Montes?
I just want to say this is the first meeting of two thousand and twenty, right? Happy New Year, everybody, and let's have a really good two thousand and twenty. Yeah, I can ask the report.
Thank you very much. Just kind of the recap. Ms. Weisner spoke about the point-in-time count and the homelessness count. It's very, very important. She had mentioned interacting with them, and again, with our police department and other agencies, it is very safe. But the importance of knowing how many homeless we have in Madera and Madera County really kind of depends on how much funding we get to address that need. So, we really need to be as close as possible, if not spot-on, to the number of homeless in Madera County. That's why it's so important to go up into the hills and the nooks and crannies and not duplicate and find out how many homeless we have. And the same thing with the census. That's a very good point, Mr. Councilman. The census is so very, very important because state and federal funding goes by the census. And so, there's a lot of very important questions per household that must be answered, and it would certainly behoove the City of Madera to make sure that those numbers are accurate and that people participate in the census. That's all I have. I know we have two closed sessions. Hilda?
Before...
You're raising your hand.
Yes, I did have something since we're still on F, which concerns future agenda items. I would request the City Council to put on a performance evaluation of myself. It's been six months, and I think it would be appropriate for us to get together and see how things are going. Thank you. And I don't know if you're going to want me to go to G or now, Mr. Mayor, or if you're doing the Housing Authority open session items first.
We are. We're going to move into the Housing Authority portion of it, and then we'll announce all closed session items after that. Councilman Rodriguez? Oh, I'm sorry. This is you guys' thumbs up. I forgot about that one, too. Yeah, we're good. Thank you, everybody. We'll move into the Housing Authority portion of it.
Will we do that? You want to say?
No, go right ahead. Actually, I'm right behind you.
Whenever you're ready, Hilda.
Thank you. The council has come out of closed session. The closed session was for the council and there was also a closed session that the housing authority held. Only the city council has something to report and that is: One, on a claim filed on December 5th by Jose Arellano alleging damage to his wheel as a result of striking a pothole and seeking $170 for damages. The council rejected the claim by a vote of 5 to 1 with Councilmember Holly voting no. Second, on a claim filed on December 18 by Antonio Mesa alleging tire damage to both right side tires and the right rear wheel as a result of striking a pothole. Mr. Mesa alleges $537.09 in damages and the council voted to reject that claim as well with a vote of 5 to 1 with Councilmember Holly voting no. That is all I have to report.
Thank you very much, Hilda. And with that, meeting adjourned until February 5th.